Dr. Rice, I think we're ready to start. But you're on mute.
I am on mute. Thank you. Sorry, I was just trying to get my computer to function properly. All right, okay. So we'll go ahead and call our meeting to order right now. This is our Education Committee's special meeting for Articles 2 through 4. I will let Shelley proceed with the roll call to see if we have a quorum.
All right, Amber Rice.
I present.
Brian Smith.
Present.
Esther Key. Chesa and Johnson. Chris Long.
Present.
Kyle Emerson.
Present, good morning.
Morning. Matt Shaw.
Present.
Orlando Acordo.
Present.
Sandy Nygaard. Darren Hollingworth. Sharon, we can't hear you yet, but I do see you trying to speak, I think.
Yes, I'm here, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Phoebe Merrill.
Present.
Uh, that's try hope.
Present.
I count nine, we have four on.
Awesome. All right, thank you everyone for joining. It looks like we have a fairly large group of guests as well today, so since this is a public meeting, everything you say will obviously be recorded, even things put in the chat will be maintained in for public record. So if you have something to speak and we have visitors speaking, make sure that you announce yourself and give your name or give your name in the chat, especially if you're logged in under like a first name only, so that we can make sure for record keeping, we know who's speaking and who's providing feedback. So I'll just start with that. We do have a relatively long list of things we'd like to get to today, so I think I'll try my best to sort of strictly stay to what we have in the agenda at least. And then I'm hoping to be able to provide plenty of time for anyone who has additional comments or things they'd like to provide specific feedback on, so we can make sure we give as much time as we can to those on the call. So the first thing we have on the agenda here for discussion, act them, action items, is the rulemaking goals and objectives for the the items listed in here. So Gail, do you want to provide any other overview today?
Do you want to cover that door? Otherwise Rachel can.
Uh, Rachel. Great. All right. Well, I will just share, this is Rachel Garcia with the Department of Health Services. Very nice to see how many participants we have on the line and in the room today. A little bit of background on this rulemaking is that we have initiated this rulemaking to look at Articles 2 through 4, which include medical direction and ALS-based hospital certification rules, training program rules, as well as emergency medical care technician rules. The rulemaking is based off of the last five-year rule review report that was developed in the last, did you say it was done in the last two years?
Two years.
And some of the issues that were identified during that timeframe. This rulemaking also speaks to align with House Bill 2609 and some of the more recent statutory requirements that have gone into effect as of January 1st. We have an opportunity here today to really go through some of the highlighted sections, and as our Chair, Dr. Rice said, there are specific items teed up in the agenda for discussion today. We are very much looking forward to seeking feedback. Our initial public comment period ended on March 3, or March 3rd was when our initial public comment period online closed. We did not receive any comments via the online surveys format. We are seeking public comments today as part of today's meeting, and we will certainly be following up with stakeholders to let you know about additional public comment periods that will open and any other online survey opportunities. Ruth Ann, anything to add to that?
Yes, this is Ruth Ann McCall, I'm a senior's senior role analyst for the department. I just wanted to add that when we request, we have to request permission from the Governor to do a rulemaking. And when we requested that permission, we had specific things that we needed to include, and only those things that are included in what we submitted to the Governor can be part of this rulemaking. So it's not an open season for changing everything in the rule.
Yes. Uh, thank you. And for those of you that have not worked with Ruth Ann yet, she is a statute and rule expert. We're very fortunate to have her guide us through this rulemaking based on our authority when it comes to being able to update this rule package. We also want to draw your attention quickly to the fact that the agenda includes links to the webpage where you can see information about this rulemaking. The links include the February draft rules that we're reviewing today with highlighted sections. And there's also a link to the online survey that is closed, but again, we will refresh that information if there is an additional survey opportunity to submit public comments that way. I think Seth Baller and Dr. Bradley would like to add anything?
Uh, no, before I turn it over to Dr. Rice, uh, thank you for everyone participating in this meeting today. I will help monitor the chat and electronic hand raises, along with hand raises in the rooms. We have everyone an opportunity to speak and make sure the voice is heard. So I will help kind of monitor that, we'll go over as we see hands raised, I'll go in here in the room in person, along with virtually online. And Amber, I will go ahead and hand it over to you for the next section. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, I will move on to our next discussion item here. So the first one is going to be, I'll just, I'll take them in order unless we start to run out of time and we may need to skip some things and move to something else if there's a particular area of concern. So the first one here will be discussing with an approved consensus recommendation for Articles 2 through 4 EMS training and certification rules. And so the page references for each of these items is going to be listed below to help you follow along and find the right section. So number one is the definition for contact hour for training programs in students. So that will be in a recommended addition here. So the discussion is for number one, I'm going to kind of take these separately.
And then, uh, just for the switch markers, if we can just get a motion to start this, uh, section, please?
Yeah, absolutely. If I have a motion to discuss from the committee?
Still moved, Amber.
Thanks, Matt.
Second, Brian.
Thank you, Brian. So looking here at the specific definition that we're discussing is going to be the definition for contact hours, and you'll find that in page 23. And the definition here reads, I'm trying to find the exact section, contact hour means a 60-minute period during which a student is for didactic instruction in classroom with the lead instructor or a designee. Skills training in a classroom situation, receiving instruction with lead instructor or designee, present onsite and clinical training, the student's preceptor, and that's obviously according to the statutory requirements for preceptors as well. So any specific discussion on this definition?
And I think the feedbacks, Amber, that you have provided from some members with that, uh, page 23 leads into page 24, and to the next page as well.
Yeah, so if you scroll down just below that first initial section, the second part has to do with the addition of the EMR, uh, training curriculum and rules. And so for the EMR training curriculum, it starts to list the hours. And so this is where the minimum course length is set in here, and so for the EMR, since this is a new enrule, a minimum course length of 75 hours, five of which are clinical and field training. And then on the next page, a minimum of five patient interactions, and in the definition of patient, it's a sick person real requiring evaluation essentially. So it doesn't seem to include simulated patient encounters if I read strictly by the rule that's written here. Is that correct?
Are we considering simulated, putting simulated? This is Orlando.
Uh, that's, that's a question. So I guess I can continue on through to the other changes here, and we can kind of discuss that as it relates to kind of all of these. So below the EMR training curriculum requirements, it goes on to no more than 24 students in a course, and then below that is EMT certification changes, recommending a change from 130 to 150 hours, a minimum of 140 contact for instruction, and clinical and training with 10 patient interactions as well. There weren't any recommended changes to the number of clinical hours for paramedic training programs. So the specific addition seems to be five, five hours for EMRs and 10 contact hours of clinical and field training and 10 patient interactions for EMT training curriculums. And this is the part that I've received the most feedback from. So if folks want to speak to any specific concerns they have, I think now would be a good time.
It looks like there's Ian online first.
Okay, Ian?
All right, yeah, hello, Ian Cassidy, Northwest Fire District, Division Chief of Training. Specific to the EMT portion of this and the addition of the 10 patient interactions, my concern is if we are not going to allow simulated patient interactions, the amount of hours that that's going to take running a fire academy with an EMT is probably going to be upward of 250 hours for a standard 25-person academy. Uh, if you're, if you're looking at, you know, an hour per patient interaction, and then having to be able to schedule those recruit firefighter EMTs into hospital settings or in field settings is going to be pretty problematic. So I have some concerns about that if we're not going to be considering patient simulations as part of those.
Yeah, thank you, Ian.
Uh, it looks like, uh, next up was TJ.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll go in order after that.
Perfect.
Good morning. Uh, I'm not sure what iteration it was in, but we had high-fidelity simulations in the language before, and that's in standard line with the national curriculum as well. And the two previous ones, the EMR was a new training piece that was added, and for whatever reason, the EMT portion had been taken out in a previous rule update. So it was going back in, but the standard was 10 patient interactions that were accomplished through clinical vehicular or high-fidelity simulation. And I would echo all of the items that Northwest just uttered, because I think it's going to be really challenging to try and schedule those if we don't have that high-fidelity simulation as an option. Thank you.
I think it's Ben next, and then after that, we'll go to Brian Stevens. Ben?
Good afternoon. You know, I have to agree, I don't think this is a realistic goal to make. I mean, it's, it's an honorable goal, but honestly, if in our setting, in a rural setting, uh, we're the only ambulance company up here. There's only one hospital, and we're saturated with students, from nursing to paramedic to EMT. And there are some requirements that, uh, you know, the community colleges are going to have to really achieve to get their students in here in a formal way. And it would be a very big burden just for guardian medical transport to take this on. And 10 patient interactions, maybe in the city of Phoenix or Tucson, might be realistic, but in Flagstaff, they're lucky to get three. So you're talking about multiple iterations of, you know, ride times, and, uh, you know, our company is more than willing to accommodate a certain limited number of EMT students, but to make this a requirement, I think you're going to have a major failure point in, you know, in getting EMT certified.
So what I'm hearing is that it would sort of go against the goal of decreasing barriers to EMT training and certification?
I do, and I think that I'd love to hear from some of the community colleges that do have to work with hospital organizations and ambulance organizations where there are student contracts required that have to have minimums such as complete verification of immunizations. Uh, they have to be onboarded with the risk legal HIPAA compliance. I mean, as a hospital organization, this is mandatory. So right now, because of the mandatory requirements of our hospital system, EMTs no longer do EMT rotation through the emergency department. It is too much of a burden for the community college to put them in that situation to get every single student signed up and approved before they're doing their rotations.
Awesome. Yeah, thank you, Ben. Uh, I appreciate that a lot. And then Brian, you had something as well?
Yeah, good afternoon, everyone. I just want to echo some of the, the comments made by Chief Cassidy and some of the others. I just think from where I sit, from the Tucson Fire Department, I'm, academy classes are 30 to 45 plus, we're running back to backs. I've got medic students back to back, so I'm trying to take care of the, the bulk of what the city is trying to get trained. I just do not, personally, I don't think I have the capacity, even though we are, you know, a metropolitan organization with students, medical students, I get PJs, we have contracts with the PJs to provide time for them. U of A banner, you know, residence driving and stuff, I, I'd be a little bit stretched to, to make that happen. And 10 contact hours with 10 patient interactions, you might spend several hours with on the, depending on what rig you got assigned to that day, you might not even see that. It might take actual longer hours to make those contacts, so just something to think about. Um, I think I'd be willing, I don't know, I, I think I've had some discussions with folks about maybe somebody who's new to the program, coming through an open enrollment program, never knows, doesn't really know what the business is of what we do, maybe providing some of those folks, those, that type of contact hour versus somebody who's coming in through an employer organization, they're going to get those contact hours, so those are just my thoughts.
Right. Thank you very much, Chief Stevens, it's very helpful. Um, and then TJ, did you also have something else? Your hand's still up. No.
Sorry about that. No, just to add on, I'm over at a Phoenix, at Phoenix College now, and there's, there's no way that this would be possible as far as the, the numbers involved in students, and we're already, I mean, we're already doing this practice throughout the state, but a, I would say a vast majority, probably 98% or above are doing these at below the paramedic level through simulations, and that's common practice throughout the state.
Yeah, I would agree with that for sure in the, in the sort of oversight I have in EMT training. Can I ask the group to comment maybe a little bit on 150 hours versus 130 hours? I know, speaking from our program here at the University of Arizona, 150 hours would probably destroy our EMT training program at the university. We have a very challenging time getting students through and getting the, uh, the time in seats with instructors that we need to reach the 130 hours. So I don't know if others have the same issue with the increase in number, but I think for our program, this would present a a really, really significant burden to increase the number of hours from 130 to 150. And I, I know when Josh Gator gets on, he'll probably speak to that a little more, but he was running a little late, so I thought I would at least mention from our side the, some of the issues we'd have and see if any other folks would be presented with the same challenge.
Uh, this is Brian, oh, I'm sorry.
I'll go Vince then.
Well, I actually had a question. So what is the reasoning or the rationale for increasing it 20 hours, other than the contact for field training and additional didactic instruction? I mean, are we trying to achieve a another category of, uh, systems, body systems or pathology? Or is it just, we just want to get it to 150 because of a national standard or something?
Yeah, that I'm actually not sure about. Maybe some of our, our role writing folks can give us a little insight into that specific change.
This is Ruth Ann McCall. Uh, as I understand it, these numbers came from the national standards. So the national standard for, uh, EMR is, as we included in the draft, and the national standard for EMT is the 150 with 140 didactic practical skills and 10 of clinical and seal training.
I was just trying to look that up to see if there's, that's posted anywhere. I don't see that anywhere online, but I'd have to probably look a little further to find.
I think in line, well, well, someone wants to look that up. I see, uh, Brian Smith and Sandy, then Sharon.
Hi.
Go ahead, thank you, Brian.
Hi, this is Brian Smith. Um, when we originally did this, so that's in the, that's in the educational standards. It's where that, the, the hours are found for each level. And I think in this case, that's our, eight, was a recommended time. And what happened when, the reason we went with 130 instead of 150 when we first did this back in 2013 was because most of the programs that are especially college-oriented were not able to fit 150 hours into a regular semester schedule. And so they, they decided they could probably do 130 in that kind of a schedule, and that's how we ended up with that number.
Yeah, and I think that's our experience here. I don't think that we could run a college course training program and increase the hours to 150. And to my knowledge, I don't think that any of our college-based classes that have students taking the national registry exam have a particularly difficult issue with pass rates or anything like that, so I definitely would question the need to move this back to 150, especially in light of needing more EMTs in the state of Arizona, and then this, again, presenting a, a burden without any, you know, real specific need being documented. Sandy? Sandy, did you have a comment?
Gotta go to Chris Long.
Okay, sorry, there it is. Yes, I'm, my, just, it's just kind of to throw this out. If they do not meet the, uh, the national standard for the hours, um, are they still eligible to test for national registry?
So national registry, to my knowledge, doesn't mandate any specific number of hours for certification.
I couldn't remember, that's why I asked that question.
Yeah, I don't.
And I'm afraid to get out of my screen because I had a hard time getting in today.
I think it was Chris Long next, and then Orlando.
Yeah, just a comment on the hours for the National EMS Education Standards. It's a, it's a consensus opinion on the hours. It is not a requirement.
Okay, thank you for that. Helpful.
Yes, current, so it's Orlando. So currently right now, for the past few years, so for the EMT, for the community college, we're, we're averaging about 198 hours total with didactic, practical, and the, uh, 10 patient contact portions. So I, I don't think we have a problem with it, but you know, whatever you guys come up with, as long as we, uh, you know, can have a happy medium of how many hours?
Yeah, and I don't think that there's a, a maximum limit, right? Like, I think a training program that chooses to have more hours is obviously totally okay within the rule. I think that the issue would be the negative impact on training programs by increasing the hours for those that, that can't do it in specifically the college courses. Uh, and then who else do I have up here? Sorry. Uh, TJ, did you have another comment?
Yeah, I had the, um, records before I went through them, and I don't remember the couple of years that I was in reviewing the course submissions that we had, very many, if any, that were below 150 hours. I think the average in the state was at least 180, and a lot of those top 200, so very few, if any, that, that were actually submitted with less than 150 course hours included in the request. Dewey might be able to verify that now.
It sounds like there's some programs that are well above that, but other programs that find that this may be a barrier to certification based on timeframes, it's kind of college courses and the way those curriculums run, mandated hours in the classroom, is that correct?
Yeah, I think that's definitely true of some of our, I mean, certainly our program would struggle greatly to, to get EMTs through if we had to increase the the number of instructor hours required. Um, okay, any more comments on this section here? Does anyone else want to make any other comment? Sharon?
Hi, Dr. Rice. Um, it's not specifically on this section, but, um, in a prior section, there's a term used in a classroom situation. Could you further define situation? And is that opening up the opportunity for synchronous and asynchronous education in EMS?
Good question, Sharon.
Which page were you on, Sharon? Just for that essential control of that?
It's page 23.
It's, it's right there, um, in A1.
In the definition of. Yeah.
This is Ruth Ann McCall. Uh, the term classroom situation was included rather than classroom per se to allow for remote, uh, didactic, uh, instruction.
Okay, so this would open up a new opportunity for remote didactic instruction?
Correct.
Okay. And would that at all change the, the number of students allowed to be in a section? Or does that still mean that it would have to be the limit of 24 per section? Sharon?
To tag along with the quantity of students in a cohort, previously there was a a nine, I mean, they're saying that we could combine the didactic portions of cohorts
Mm-hmm.
Um, as long as we had, we met the student to lab instructor ratio, is that still in effect?
That, that still is in here, Sharon, somewhere. I did see it. I can't remember what page it's on, but it does still say in here that you can combine, or at least I thought it was.
You stand?
It should still be in here.
This is Ruth Ann McCall. If you look on page 21B.
Uh-huh.
A training program director may combine, if she can see more than one core session for didactic instruction.
Perfect, okay, yeah. Okay, cool, that was still in there. Okay, thank you.
Hey, Jean, right now.
Uh, Amber, do you want to maybe try moving down to the next one?
So the next one we have is in, uh, page 11 is the next one, right? Are we still on this one, Gail? We're kind of all over. Uh, number two is on page 11. Number two is on page 11. And this is policies and procedures established, documented, implemented for administrative medical director approval and oversight of EMRs.
This is Ruth Ann McEl. If I may interject, the input we need now here is on whether it is appropriate since the statute allows an administrative medical director to approve an individual to perform EMR duties with no other requirements associated with that in the definition. The input needed here is whether it is appropriate to require an administrative medical director to evaluate the individual competence in the areas included in the statute before approving that individual to perform EMR duties.
Ruth Ann, this is Rachel. Are you saying that we are hamstrung by the statute here?
I am not saying anything.
So my, my question is, we don't currently require this of EMTs, correct? So an EMT can operate as an EMT without a medical director?
Correct. Unless they're, unless they're doing STR.
Unless they're doing an STR, correct. So would this now mean that every EMR would need a medical director? But EMTs would not? Is that what this is saying?
This is Ruth Ann McEl again. If an, an individual is going to perform EMR duties due to the approval of an administrative medical director as required in the statute, then they would have to have an administrative medical director. If they are qualifying to be an EMR through the other mechanism in statute, which is having this training program, then they would not have to have an administrative medical director.
Got it. So Gail, can you, I know that you've explained this a little bit in the past. Can you explain that again?
I'm sorry, Amber, which part?
The two pathways for EMRs to function in Arizona. I think that's sort of what this is getting at.
So the, the one component which allows an administrative medical director to approve an EMR, and that pathway is what is, I think, outlined here, is what would be required for those individuals. The other pathway would be to go to one of the approved EMR training program, which I think we will get to further in the whole package.
Okay.
So this, the two pathways, wanted to go through one of the approved EMR training program. The state has the ability to outline what is required in the training program, just not what is required for certification because the state is unable to certify EMRs. So the other option is this administrative medical director can allow someone to function as an EMR, but that would require them to have medical direction because you're working under that individual. Did I correct it, Ruth Ann? I believe so, that.
Okay. Matt?
Sorry, I just want to make sure I understand that. So if the, I understand the pathway to become an EMR if you went through the class. But if you just have an administrative medical director, they could, they could essentially bless you as an EMR as long as you meet these couple criteria that are listed here without any formal training? Is that, did I understand that?
This is Ruth Ann McEl. According to the statute, an administrative medical director can approve an individual to function as an EMR. We are trying to put into role some parameters for what that approval needs to encompass. In the first part, BI 1, 2, 3, and 4, those requirements come directly from the statute. And we would want to ensure that the administrative medical director has some sort of process and criteria that include verifying that the individual has these these skills and competencies that are specific to the statute. And then the, the II, III, III, IV, and V portion mirrors what is currently in the rules for EMCTs with respect to the monitoring that an administrative medical director would be doing as part of being an administrative medical director for an individual performing EMCT duty, which is specified in B just above that. But also, if they're going to prove somebody to be an EMR, we would also believe that they would want to monitor and evaluate their competency. Make sure that they have ongoing education, training, or remediation necessary to maintain or enhance their competency. And then if the individual is not performing well, have a process for withdrawing approval and also for reinstating approval.
Does that answer your question, Matt? I think it kind of explains what's required in statute. It's that first section. The second section is really kind of to make sure that these individuals may not be going through an actual training program that the administrative medical director assures that they at least have these safety mechanisms in place.
Correct.
And then I, I think after that, with Kyle and then Sandy.
Thanks, Dr. Bradley. Good morning. Can someone just explain the background as to why the need for the EMR exists? To me, it's quite a bit of language that really requires a medical director to do a lot versus what we would normally the student would just get out of a simple class. Is it a shortage of EMTs? Or can someone just briefly explain the background on this one?
The Bureau's role to write the rule that it supports the statute. I think that's the rear side just for just. So statute was passed, the Bureau's role is now to create the rule to help implement statutes for a change.
Thank you. So it's based on the statute. Okay, thank you much.
Sandy?
Yes, Dr. Bradley, can I, can I now assume that the administrative medical director can would pass this, this training down to, say, a prehospital coordinator?
This is Ruth Ann McEl. The rule as written doesn't state that the administrative medical director has to do these things. They have to ensure that it happens.
Okay, I just see that putting an extra burden on people that are already overwhelmed and overloaded with with monitoring paramedics and eyes.
This is Ruth Ann McEl. The rule is not requiring an administrative medical director to approve anyone to function as an EMR. It is only saying that if an administrator medical director wants to approve an individual to function as an EMR, these are the parameters for, for doing that.
Right. So if they took the EMR training course, none of this would be required. Is that correct?
This is Ruth Ann McEl, yes.
Okay, thank you, Ruth Ann.
This is Orlando. It seems like the route, since there's already a template for the EMR, or for, just like the EMT, seems like the easiest path for EMR training is to somewhat use the same template as an EMP, where, you know, just go through a training program. And, and I'm pretty sure some of, I don't know how many medical directors are on this meeting. If, if that would be easier for them, or is that something that they might have some concerns? If they can just, you know, go to route of blessing someone to be an EMR and hope that they have continued education and they do well moving forward. You know what I mean?
Yeah, no, I, I get it, Orlando. That makes total sense. I think that what we're, what we're being asked to do here is review the rule as it relates to the statute that was passed. So we can't change the statute to me, you know, we can't make any of this easier on anybody necessarily. And what a medical director chooses to do, or how an agency chooses to get their EMRs trained, I think is not necessarily part of this. I think this really, as Ruth Ann said, is, is really just to outline the rules that relate to the statute that was passed. And so we're really, I think, right here, we're just trying to see if this encompasses what is necessary to, to to have a rule that, that outlines what's required in statute.
Correct. Is there feedback or concerns about the current verbiage, understanding that this is in place directly to address the statutory language that the Bureau needs to create rules for?
Yeah, I mean, I think it makes sense to have it mirror what sort of the EMT side is to make it consistent. Vince?
Can you scroll up a bit? I'm, I'm just taking a look at the, the requirements. It stopped at four. Let me see, 1, 2, 3, 4. It, it looks like, do you see driver's training on here?
No.
This is Ruth Ann McEl. It's not within the purview of the administrative medical director to, to do a driver's training course, we believed. So we left that out. This is just medically related. Presumably, the employer would be making sure that the driver training portion was done.
I, I would say that based on the statute as written and approved, that maybe you could put that as clarification point, that the driver's training portion would be the responsibility of the EMS agency and not the medical director, but it's part of one of the five points that was actually listed in the statute.
This is Ruth Ann McEl. Do you believe that ensuring driver training occurs would be something you would want to have the administrative medical director be responsible for?
No, not responsible for, but the EMS agency is responsible for it. And it would be a checkbox to the medical directors. They may have completed the emergency vehicles training portion of this just so that the medical director, as per ERAS, understands that they have met that minimum. And I must say that, you know, some of the background of this was the EMR responder courses in Arizona, they're pretty much non-existent. And the version that was passed on the, on the statute side is much less than the US Department of Transportation EMR national curriculum. So, you know, that, that, it's almost like this is the easy way to get an EMRs for an EMS agency to pronounce the basic training and by contract through their administrative medical director, bring together an EMR team. And this does not apply to base station medical direction or those kind of things. This is an EMS agency that is contracted, contracted with a specific administrative medical director.
So Vince, I think my understanding from the previous meetings that we have had was that that the, the specific EMS agencies are obligated by their insurance companies. So sort of completely outside of the world of medical direction, nothing to do with that. EMS agencies contract with their, their insurance agencies to provide insurance coverage. And they are the ones that actually have requirements for what, what driver training is actually required to actually get insured. And so it would presumably create quite a conflict if the medical director at all was involved in something in the insurance realm of the, of the agency. So I know it's in, it's listed in statute in the same place. But I think what we're trying to do here is speak specifically to what the medical director requirements are. And I'm, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that ensuring driver training would be something I would want to be responsible for, given that the insurance company is who dictates to my agencies what driver training is necessary.
And, and I get that. I just think that, you know, you know, I'm thinking of a situation where, you know, an EMR has come forward and has received medical directive approval through their EMS agency. But, you know, this is a, you know, if I was DHS, I'd want to ensure that they also have checked that box. If it's not here, then, you know, where should it go? But, you know, it needs to be somewheres.
I see, Brian, you have your hand up as well? Outside of the feedback from Vince regarding the driver's training, is there any other concerns or feedback with what's outlined on page 11 in D covered for an EMR section?
Roy?
Yes, Mike, I have no problem with everything all the way down to monitoring. It seems to be a dichotomy is that they were giving the medical director in this situation the authority to revoke EMR certification or performance and requiring ongoing monitoring by the medical director. None of that would be required if the individual went through the second route of going through the training program. There's no provision there that I'm aware of that would require ongoing monitoring by someone. So it seems to be a dichotomy between the two of if you go through the training program, there's not a requirement for ongoing monitoring, yet there is if you went through the medical director route. I think you should limit this section to the statutory requirements for the medical training aspect of it and leave that monitoring component out of the medical director's purview and responsibility.
So I think just from, from my perspective as a medical director, I would have a, a problem with having the sort of responsibility of approving an EMR to function and then not having the authority to monitor their performance. Or having medical directors that can, can wave their hand and create an EMR and then aren't required to, to, to do anything to make sure that they're, they're functioning safely and that they're, they're being monitored by the, the medical director that's blessing them without any training. So, I mean, I think I, I may push back a little bit on that one. I mean, I know it seems like a lot, but I think it's what the statute requires to be able to allow a medical director to approve an EMR without a training. I think this should be required.
Looks like Matt, you're next, and then Brian?
Just scrolling back up, what was the, if the provider elected to go through the training, what was the hour requirement for EMR training? Is it 75 hours?
It was 75.
75 hours. So if, if the, if the student goes through a proper EMR course, they would receive 75 hours of education. Or they could go what amounts to a backdoor route of getting a medical director to sign off on them with the equivalent of what looks to be a couple hours of training. I, I guess I'm not super comfortable with that. I, I wonder if, if the cover, if this section couldn't look more like what the actual 75 hours of training would be. So the medical director would be responsible for five hours of cardiac and five hours of respiratory, or whatever that breakdown was, so that there was parity. I just, this, this to me feels very like backdoor and, and, and not very well established. And I understand that it's in statute and it has to be there, but, but I think we could force it to be more robust.
This is Ruth Ann McEl. We would have, I don't see any specific statutory authority for requiring an administrative medical director to follow the same guidelines as a training course. So these are the parameters we have that we can put in that is within our statutory authority.
I guess I don't, I don't understand why. If we're, if we're able to, if we're, if we're discussing this whole section and what we want it to look like, why couldn't we make it more robust?
This is Ruth Ann McEl again. The we are leaving it to the administrative medical director's judgment as to what it requires to make sure that an individual that they are going to approve for performing EMR duties to adequately function that way. You could have somebody who takes 15 hours to learn how to do CPR. You might have somebody that has already had five different CPR courses over the course of other employment and doesn't really need much of anything. We're leaving it to the administrative medical director to make sure that We're leaving it to the Administrative Medical Director to make sure that this individual. In here, all we're doing is putting in the parameters. And what we're asking you to tell us is it's appropriate to require an Administrative Medical Director to evaluate somebody's competency before approving them for EMR duty. That's all we're asking this group to provide.
I guess, yeah, it does seem like the statute pretty clearly eliminates the ability to do that. Is that what you're saying, Ruth Ann? I mean, that's what I'm hearing and sort of my understanding of the statute as well.
Yes, all we're asking for is, does this group believe that it is appropriate to put some parameters on how an Administrative Medical Director would go about approving an individual to be an EMR?
I'm sorry again. I don't mean to be stubborn about this. So you're saying in statute where it limits what exactly we're allowed? In statute, essentially, this is what's in statute and we're not allowed to go outside of that? Again, I don't mean to be difficult. I'm just trying to understand.
The statute just says that an Administrative Medical Director can approves an individual to function as an EMR separate from going through a training program. What this is, this check, this addition is trying to do is put some parameters that are not overly burdensome and not going against, you know, not not trying to put more things in place that would supersede Administrative Medical Director's medical judgment on the ability of somebody to function as an EMR. We're not trying to second-guess an Administrative Medical Director.
Sure. We don't do that with any other level of certification. Like Dr. Rice can't bless me as a paramedic without taking a class first.
Sure. Go ahead, Gil.
I was just gonna say, I think the issue with this is that we are unable to certify EMRs. So just to make sure, if anyone's not clear about that, that's not in the statute. So the Bureau is not able to certify it an EMR. So that is where an EMR is different from an EMP, AEP, or paramedic. Because the way the statute is written, the Bureau is not able to certify someone who functions as an EMR. So there's two pathways now for someone to work with the CMR within Arizona. The one is to go through, one is to approve training programs. And the other is an Administrative Medical Director essentially anointing them with that ability to function as an EMR. So I don't know if that explained a little bit more?
Yeah, I think the issue for me within adding additional stuff in here is like thinking about what the function of an EMR is. And they are, an EMR is not providing medical care. So I think it would present a pretty, like maybe unreasonable burden to necessarily try to get up to a 75-hour minimum just to match what a training program might have. For someone that's mostly, it's not really providing medical care for patients. It's not really their function. So I think there's some parameters that we can place, I think, on medical directors. But I think expanding it beyond this might not be reasonable, especially in light of what their performance and day-to-day duties would be.
So Amber, maybe we could just quickly hit Brian on Orlando, because we're only on number two on the list. And I think we've got quite a bit of discussion to move on from.
Okay, Brian?
It seems like there, based off the statute, that there needs to be something in here about the driving, whether not insuring, but has completed driving course per the agency's requirements. Mike cover it. The other thing is down on, could you scroll down to II, excuse me, II? If there, if the Bureau is not certifying EMRs, then why would there be skills on Table 5.1? And then is there going to have to be two, one for EMRs that are doing it under a medical director versus those who do it under a class? It seems like you would not want the scope of practice on Table 5.1 if the Bureau is not, or the department is not going to certify EMRs.
This is Ruth Ann Smichael. We will be doing a separate rulemaking, by exempt rulemaking in Article 5 to revise Table 5.1 to include the scope of practice for EMR as well as the scope of practice for paramedics with an endorsement in critical care. Except for, which is why we added that the EMR scope of practice will be in Table 5.1.
Well, I get the, I get the critical care part, paramedic part of it because they're certified and they're going to have, they're going to have the endorsement. But how do you put skills on Table 5.1 for somebody who you don't really regulate? Because if they're not certified, you don't regulate them. How do you determine what your scope of practice is on that list? That's what I'm saying.
I think the goal is, Brian, to do the best we can with the fact that there are going to be EMRs working within the state of Arizona. There is a national scope of practice for EMRs. So the proposed scope of practice for EMRs that the standing statutory committees will review in May will be to look at what's the national scope is, so that there is at least a baseline scope of practice in the state of Arizona with the fact that there will be EMRs working in the state.
Thank you, Gil. I'll take one quick comment from Orlando and then we'll move on to the next section of critical care, since it sounds like there's, this is another fairly significant addition we need to discuss. Orlando, do you want to give us a quick comment?
Yes, so, I mean, you know, have these two pathways. I mean, I feel like we need to somewhat come up with like an SDR for EMR, you know, where a medical director can use a certain, you know, standard scope of practice and training. And maybe that will just fly through the process and at least they have something to go on. I just don't feel like medical directors should just have, you know, to stay consistent, you know, we should be able to have, give them a pathway of what an EMR should be trained and the skills, if there's any skills, those kind of things. So I feel like we need to create some kind of an SDR process for EMR, so in that way, you know, I have covered.
Thank you, Orlando. So just if you guys have seen the national scope of practice for EMRs, that there are very, very few skills that an EMR can perform. So we're talking about a very small number of things which they would be even allowed to do as it relates to patient care. So they're driving ambulances for the most part. So I think just to keep that in perspective. Let's move on to the next one, which is number three, to the Critical Care Paramedic Course Requirements and Contact Hours. This is going to be page 25. So this section isn't terribly long. It's obviously comprehensive, but it's obviously very condensed to fit in this rule. So what it is essentially saying here is that to have an additional endorsement to provide critical care services, you'd have to have your paramedic certification and work for at least two years as a paramedic. The next part is talking about the course covering the knowledge, skills, and competencies. And then prepares a student for national certifications. It kind of covers the coursework and then no more than 21 students additionally, as in some of our other courses. For this one, the minimum course length is 200 hours and 135 contact hours of didactic instruction, 40 hours clinical training, and 25 in-field training. And then listed there are the summary of the specific areas that should be included in the training program.
This is Ruth Ann Smichael. These topics in the list came from previous guidance from the committees. Looks like.
Vince, Matt?
Overall, I do not have any objections to anything that's listed here. It all looks like great training. My question would be, a minimum of 25 contact hours of field training. What constitutes proper field training? Because the majority of the people on this line, we operate ambulance services, but we don't have this and trying to get there. So where would we send our people for proper field training?
So looking for a better definition, is that what you're saying, Vince, of field training?
Yes.
I think my suggestion would be field training would most likely be in hospital placements. So in MICUs or STICUs or NICUs, things like that, to get those critical care hours. My question was, is there also, we talked previously about if you already had an ISBC certification, being able to qualify for the critical care endorsement through the state? Is that in here or does that go someplace else? Or is that not a thing anymore?
Ruth, you pulled your then, Michael. The, this section has to do with the training course to get an endorsement, to qualify for an endorsement. And then in Article 4, that is where we talk about how to get initial certifications for, to become a critical care paramedic. And that's number four, the next thing on the list.
Which is page 31, Matt?
Thank you.
Yeah.
It looks like next is Grace.
I was asking some of the, or going down the same road, Matt was just going down. The critical care, I would like you to include the flight paramedic certification because they're basically, in the IBSC exam, the same class or same test, except the flight one has the flight physiology questions. So, and there's a lot of flight paramedics in the state that would want to get this endorsement.
That's, so that's a different section, so we will get to that. This is specific to the training program, so that's, many of the endorsements components overlap different rules. So just, if you kind of look down the agenda, you'll see where some of the other things will be covered. But this is specific just to someone who's doing the training program within the state.
Right. So if you were going to run a training program within the state of Arizona for this, not including someone who already came in with their critical care certification. So if you were going to run a training program here, we're talking about you need students that have their paramedic certification and two years of experience as a paramedic. And then you have to have these specific hours that you provide in the specific content areas if you run a training program. So this doesn't mean that someone who comes in with an outside certification is not included. It just means for your training programs locally, they must meet this criteria. And so what I've heard so far is the number of contact hours seem appropriate to folks. It's 200 hours and then the 25 hours contact time. I've also heard specifying that this is critical care in a critical care setting or something similar to that. Is that correct, Matt? Something like that? And then next I have Nathan.
Hi, I'm Nathan Nigard. I'm a flight paramedic and I also work at Phoenix College. I was just looking at this training we have compared to other states and such, and their training. And one of the most popular ones is UMBC, which I believe a lot of this was based off of. And their training program's 110 hours of didactic and such, along with 48 hours of in-hospital clinical training, which, I mean, I totally think that's kind of the best training for these critical care paramedics to be in the things such as OB, CV, ICU, and some RT. And that'd be kind of nice for that to be a little bit more specific inside of this. Moving on, the field training on helicopters and ambulances, I kind of see that as really difficult as, you know, they'd probably be stuck on a nurse ride training under the nurse. But then, you know, what does the nurse qualifications have and such like that? Along with that, trying to put them on a helicopter with, you know, flight paramedics and flight nurses and that crew. A lot of these helicopters can't really take a patient plus what we tend to call a third rider or a student. A lot of our programs have problems even training our own people in getting them to ride along on flights, including some that we have to send to other states to fly in larger helicopters.
Yeah, so this doesn't seem to specify where you get the clinical hours from. I think it's just clinical contact hours and field training hours. I think it, as it's written, is very vague as to where you get those.
I think with Vince next, then Brian, then Matt?
So yes, I was just responding back to Matt Shaw. And as I read this, the clinical training part, to me, that was definitely defining it as being in hospital at any of the departments that we've been talking about. But field training is field training. That is out in the field EMS. So I look at that, it's like, I don't know of any ground ambulance in Arizona that has that program that we could go to to get 25 contact hours. And for the same reasons that Nathan spoke about, the air option would be out. You know, we even have a sister organization, but to put our medics on that to get field training experience would be very difficult for those same reasons Nathan discussed. So again, is this something that we should strive for as a goal or make it an absolute minimum as it's stated here? I would say to strive for the goal, but in a few years after we've been doing this, we probably will have field training sites that we can go to. But right now in development, they don't exist. Thank you.
This is Ruth Ann Smichael. Would you recommend that the requirements be changed to a minimum of 65 hours of clinical training and field training?
And/or field training? Yes. Yes, I would go with that. Thank you.
But the 135 hours of didactic instruction seems to be in line with other training courses. Is that correct? For those of you who have done these training courses?
This is Tony Kierzine with Guardian Air. I'm a chief flight paramedic. I think that would be important for this critical care aspect is more high fidelity simulation that is specific to some of these standards. Because what we're trying to gain the knowledge and the experience for in facility transports for these critical care patients is going to be real life things that they're not initially seeing. We do maybe balloon transport in a year, so trying to find the specific skill that we're going to now be requesting these paramedics to be doing those transports is going to be very specific. And we need to create that environment. So then we can identify where weaknesses are, we can hone in on those. Instead of getting that one patient you may see once every two or three years or putting somebody where they're going to be putting someone in harm. So I think it would be better to be more specific on what high fidelity is or even leaving that open to a training organization, but being specific on what that ask is.
Thank you. I think we've got Brian, Matt, and then Eileen.
Hi, this is Brian. I just have one question about the requirement in here for the flight physiology. I can see that if you do an FPC, but does the CCP have flight physiology required as a part of that? And for the testing, Matt probably hopefully knows that.
Forgive me, it's a chapter in the textbook of all the critical care paramedic textbooks.
Okay.
Not a big one.
Yeah, I think that it's not a tested item in the ground-based exam. But, yeah, most of the courses will include flight physiology.
All right. And then we've got Matt, Eileen, and then Tony again in the row?
Yeah, I would agree. I think it is still, it's still probably relevant. And most college-based critical care courses include it because they assume most folks are going to try to move into the flight environment. I guess I was wondering about adding, I do think the 40 contact hours of clinical training are probably in hospital. Maybe that 25 contact hours of field training could say field and/or high fidelity simulation. I agree, it's pretty difficult in the state of Arizona to get it to be a third rider in a helicopter with all the weight and size restrictions. So high fidelity simulation seems reasonable. Or making it 65 hours of the three combined would maybe be reasonable too.
Awesome. Good suggestion. Thank you, Matt. Eileen?
Yes, I actually taught the, I had the contract for UMBC when I, to teach the critical care paramedic course out at Central Arizona College for a number of years. And our, I know the course was 110 hours. We didn't have any clinical time, which I can see the value of having the clinical time. I was on the same page with Matt as far as where the field training goes. Finding those experiences of what we taught at the UMBC course is pretty non-existent. You're not going to be able to get those 25 contact hours. The 40 clinical hours, I could see doing those with, um, focusing that on the ventilation and the, um, balloon pumps. But even though some of those hospitals, you're going to have to find some specialty time to get those specific clinicals done. But combining those in some way, or at least, um, or making the field training being high fidelity simulation, I think you can get more out of high fidelity simulation than you can trying to find these field, um, sites that are pretty non-existent.
Awesome. That's really good feedback. Thank you, Eileen. All right. And then I'm going to move on to the next part. Um, and if we have time, we can always come back to some of these. So let's move on to the initial certification requirements, which is 31. It seems like there is a little bit of discussion on that already. So let's go to 31 and talk about initial certification. Uh, oops, wrong page. Um, so in this section here, um, I think really what we're focusing on is, um,
Item C.
Item C. Yeah, there we go. Down here, paramedic applying for endorsement for critical care. This is your information that you'll apply, supply. Um, and then documentation of passing a critical care examination given by a national certification organization. So I would read that as either the FPC or the CCPC exams. Um, is that correct? It sounds vague.
Yes.
Or like it includes both.
Yes, we just don't list specific exam kind of named in our rules, but I shook my head yet to realize you can't see my head shakes.
Thank you. Okay, cool. Does anyone else have any questions or, uh, concerns or comments related to applying for endorsement? Uh, Eileen? Maybe she's getting off mute. Eileen, did you have a comment on that part?
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, on the, um, if somebody came in and has the critical care transport, um, certification and they're able to guarantee that or grant that certification, if they take one of the online courses, can they come in with and apply for that? Or do they have to have also the training program that we talked about above?
No. So the training program would be specific to any training program run in the state of Arizona. This would be separate. So if you already had your documentation that you had passed the exam by national certification organization, you could apply for that endorsement.
And would that be continuously? So even after this goes into rule, if, um, you can do one of two pathways is what I'm understanding. You can either do an online course and take the, and take the written exam. And actually, you don't even have to have a course to take the exam as long as you have the knowledge base. And then, or you can come in and take the course listed above and then you could become a, is there any testing process that goes along with that course?
Um, so my understanding based on this would be no. So just, so just to clarify your question, if you take the national certifying examination, so there is no requirement other than having a paramedic certification to sit for that exam. So just so everybody's clear, you don't have to have taken any specific course to sit for the, the exam and take the exam and get your critical care certification. There are specific requirements for recertification to keep your national certification. But I think that's your question, right? That you could do that and have that certification and come in with only that.
Exactly. Or if, or I could take the course and then, um, get, go through the application process. But is there any, I could come out just have taking the course and not having a certification, a national certification?
No, you would still need the certification based on this, uh, rule here.
Okay.
I think Nathan next, and then Matt.
Nathan Lewis, IMD. Um, I had a question on, one, national certification. Are we not allowing alternative pathways like, uh, like Eileen was talking about, uh, with UMBC's CCEMTP program? Or, uh, Cleveland Clinic's, uh, critical care, uh, paramedic program? Those are considered national equivalents because they're all over the United States. But what are we, what, why are we defining one through the Board of Specialty Paramedicine versus, uh, some other alternative pathways?
I, I think to add on to that, uh, IBSC offers, I think something like six or seven different certifications. And I can't help but wonder if we'll end up getting ourselves in trouble by not being specific which ones the state actually wants to accept for endorsement. I'm, I'm not sure if it's possible to list like what the state would accept to, to go along with the CCEMTP or, or the Cleveland Clinic. But, but I think we might get in trouble if we leave it too broad.
Sure. So kind of like national registry is a specific thing.
Right.
Yeah.
And you know, like within, within the IBSC, there's, there's the flight paramedic, there's the critical care paramedic, but they also have a wilderness paramedic and a community paramedic and a tactical paramedic. So if we're accepting any of those advanced certifications, you know, there's really only two that make a lot of sense for us.
It, it does.
But I also wonder if, sorry, I also wonder to add on to kind of clarify, my question is, if we're pointing at one particular accrediting body, aren't we, aren't we basically restricting free trade and excluding, uh, other accrediting bodies? You know, similar to DO versus MD, similar to, uh, CCEMTP, as Eileen knows, is as much and as equivalent of a program than the Board of Specialty.
In the room, we have a comment from Tony.
Yeah, if I could speak to this. So, um, Tony Ciarzino with Guardian Air. I've actually completed the Cleveland Clinic Critical Care Class, CICTP. That class is just like you would go to Mesa Community College to become a paramedic. The International Board of Certifications is what is the gold standard for our board testing for the critical care paramedics. And between its CCP or FPC, um, those are the two I believe that we're trying to drill down on because those are the ones that really hone in on the practice of what we're trying to accomplish. So I don't believe that it's painting us into a corner by acknowledging the International Board that has been identified and recognized internationally that these certifications versus just a accredited school. The first part that we were just speaking about is talking about the minimum hours for accreditation only in teaching that class. You pass that class, um, that's not a guarantee passing that course, that you're also going to then pass the board certification test. They are, I would say, argument ninth day. It's, I don't feel like it's very much comparing a DO versus an MD. Those are very different pathways, but you know, if someone is a physician versus a paramedic, you know, these are the, recognized bodies that have run for many of years. And there's multiple other states that have the same pathways. When we look at other critical care endorsements, I don't think we're trying to recreate that wheel. I think we're trying to follow in line with that. So there's not necessarily reciprocity, but if you're going to be a flight paramedic for a national organization and then have this critical care endorsement from one state to another, this is that cleaner pathway versus trying to say the USBC or the CTP, or that, I'm sorry, the Cleveland Clinic's Training Course specifically. So, thank you.
Yeah.
This is Ruth and Tamal. In this state, uh, roles are, you generally try not to, uh, specify, um, what this national certification organization is just because another one may crop up and you may have a problem because it may be better than the one that you're listing. And again, as someone said, it would be restrictive trade to specify one versus another without having a very valid reason, even if there is only one. Like for trauma centers, it's only ACF, but we say a national certifying organization. And then I think we have, uh, Billy. Billy next, and then Vince, and then there's some comments in the chat.
Hello, everyone. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Uh, hi, my name's Billy Bates. I am a Regional Manager of Clinical Practice for Guardian Flight, uh, GMR Company. Uh, I just wanted to drop a suggestion in that we follow CAMES guidelines and I think most air ambulance organizations do. And CAMES is requiring as of January 1st, 2025, paramedics to either be CCPC or FPC certified. So wouldn't that be a guideline that would be useful to follow in this situation?
I think too, with the end point, that even with, when you look at trauma centers and it's only one national organization and national registry for, you know, our EMT and paramedics, we still don't state national registry in our rule.
Even though they're defined in statutes what they are.
Yeah.
You know, unless it's defined in statute what they are, we don't, you know, we don't say the American Heart Association, you know?
Yep. Just like for, for, uh, CPR, uh, courses, uh, or something like that, or, uh, ACLS. We say, uh, advanced cardiac life support that is consistent with such and such. We don't say it has to be by that organization.
And so sometimes they change their name. If they change their names, then we can't follow our rules.
All right, Vince?
So as a director of the EMS agency, um, my recommendation to the state would please write the definition where it meets the standard of CMS's, uh, specialty care transport, that A0434 definition, because that's very specific. It says that, uh, the, uh, paramedics need a specialty care certification. And so what is written, I agree with, because we're going to be getting in the business. The purpose of this is to be, get in the business of doing specialty care transports without nurses. And we're going to be utilizing paramedics and these paramedics need to have that certification, meet the definition so that we can, uh, be in accordance with, uh, legal billing practices. And so that's important. Otherwise, these programs will not be financially sustainable. So as written, I agree. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Vince. That's helpful. Matt?
I, I, I think that I, I understand not being able to write or not wanting to write a more specific name for the certification. But again, with the IBSC, they have seven different certifications. And if this document says documentation of a passing critical care examination, who is deciding what that critical care examination by a national certification organization is? Flight paramedic doesn't have the word critical care in the title. The critical care paramedic does, and there's quite a few others as well. So I, I just feel like there's gonna, the state's going to put itself in a corner if it's not more specific about what it's willing to accept and what it's not willing to accept.
Uh, Nathan?
I, I understand, um, my other colleagues', uh, concern as far as flight paramedicine and, uh, the accreditation, uh, the CAMES accreditation for flight programs. The, the problem is, just like, uh, Noreen mentioned, if we are naming AHA versus ASHE, you leave no room for equivalency programs that meet that standard. And I think leaving it open to say that if they have a CCT EMTP, they may not be able to fly for Guardian, which is an employment requirement, but they can certainly be on a ground ambulance running critical care. And, and that's my point.
Thanks, Nathan. Okay. Matt Gale, you said?
Uh, yes, there was a question, uh, from Greg in regards to CCEMTP licensure from another state. Tennessee has its own test of requirements. I think this is saying that essentially, as long as you meet requirements, one, H or D, and then you demonstrate that you've passed a critical care examination by national certification organization, you would qualify. But I do not know what Tennessee standards are. Uh, it sounds like if they have their own state test, I don't know that that would qualify based on that.
Yeah, in the absence of the national certification exam. Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone, for your comments on that. I'll move on to the next one on our list here. Um, the next one is about refresher courses for the critical care endorsement. This is going to go back a couple pages on page 28. So this is a training program director, uh, for a training program that offers a refresher course, obviously. For critical care, a student has a paramedic with additional endorsement, so they have their endorsement. Um, and then number two, student has documentation of current certification completed before the beginning of the refresher course in. And this is our ACLS, uh, and PALS, uh, related or equivalent exams. And then the refresher course covers the knowledge and skills and competencies, uh, for a paramedic with additional endorsement. Thirty-two students, 68 contact hours, um, and then eight contact hours on topics pertinent of providing critical care. Was there, is the recertification every two years for this? I can't find that in here.
It's usually every four.
It's four for the national certification, but I didn't know what it was written in our rules here.
So, this is Ruth and Tamal. The way we wrote the, uh, the refresher course requirement, uh, is the same as, uh, tying it to the, uh, the recertification as a paramedic. So, uh, you don't need to do two separate retra, uh, uh, refresher course. Uh, if you're going to take the refresher course route, uh, for getting recertified as a paramedic, then you would take, uh, the course in K. If you are just a, uh, taking a refresher course for a paramedic, you would take the course lifted in I. And the requirements in K, uh, which is shown here, mirror what is in I with the exception of, uh, the, uh, refresher course, knowledge, skills, et cetera, requirement in K3 as well as, uh, the, uh, the number of, uh, of hours, contact hours in the course.
Right. So the, the, is this an every two-year refresher though? Is this meant to be every, for a two-year recertification? Okay.
It is one of the three routes that somebody who is going to try to recertify as a paramedic can take. They can take the refresher course or refresher challenge exam or as we will see when we get to, uh, the recertification requirements for critical care on page 33, uh, which is the next thing on our list.
Oh, okay.
That, that, that is one of the three mechanisms that an individual wanting to, uh, recertify as a paramedic with an endorsement would be, uh, able to take.
Okay. So for a two-year recertification cycle, if you were looking at four years total, this would be, if you did the refresher course option, it'd be 120 contact hours in, in, over a four-year period. I'm trying to make it, figure out what would be the equivalent on the ISBC side.
Potentially. Yes, that's what you're saying.
Okay. All right. That was my question.
And, and then I think just to make sure everyone understands, because there's different ways you can recertify as a paramedic, you could do refresher courses or you can do out of your continuing education hours. So there's, that will be the kind of the next item to discuss. So this would, this is specific to if you're doing a refresher.
Training course. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. That's helpful. Uh, Matt?
Uh, I'll hold my question for the next part then. Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Nathan?
Yeah, um, I got a question on the, um, uh, the endorsement refresher for this. And it's just eight hours of critical care with these paramedics with care endorsement. Out of a 60-hour class, could that not be, um, increased? Because there are a lot of, um, patient, um, populations and stuff that they probably won't see over those two years that they probably need a refresher on in some way.
Most critical care refresher courses that are, uh, approved by the IBSC are all a minimum of 16 hours.
Over four years.
Well, but, but, but one refresher course that you need to recert over four years, yes, is an hour course.
Right. So it's 16 hours over four years. So this would be the same.
So this essentially matches that.
Yeah.
It just had a two-year cycle to kind of match the paramedic would have to track two separate recertification.
Right. Perfect. Thank you. All right. Okay. Well, we'll move on then, since it seems like folks, um, have more questions on the second part. So moving on to page 33, or recertification requirements. And it sounds like folks had some questions or comments. And it sounds like folks had some questions or comments on that. Matt?
I guess, just, just as a clarifi- clarifying point, so because the IBSC certifications are four years and the Arizona endorsement will be every two years, in, in theory, a provider would essentially be sending in their same FPC card with the same expiration date two times, once at the very beginning and kind of once at the two-year mark. And that would be acceptable in the state's eyes as far as recertification goes, as long as it wasn't expired.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, you can't see Ruth Ann's head shaking up and down. That, that is correct, Matt.
I agree.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The hope is to actually make it easier, because I think sometimes if you're trying to track two different recertifications, uh, what we find is that sometimes people will lose track of one uh, and then end up letting one accidentally expire. So hopefully this would help kind of keep that on, on track a little bit better.
This is Ruth Ann's Michael. That's also why we tied the uh, the uh, research, the paramedic recertification and the reendorsement to the same uh applications. So that you didn't have to, and tie the time periods for that them to be in effect to the same time period. So you didn't have necessarily to apply for uh your uh paramedic uh certification in May of this year, and then have to remember that in November you have to apply for uh the endorsement again.
I will supersede the, if I have endorsement, it will supersede my normal paramedic.
Yes.
It will not. I will have to reapply.
You, when you apply for recertification as a paramedic, regardless of uh when your endorsements would be, because we're not saying when the endorsement goes in, where you're saying that you have that endorsement on your paramedic certification. And then when your search, your paramedic certifications um expires or would expire, that is when your endorsement would expire. So you would be applying for a paramedic certification with the endorsement next time.
Would, would there be an additional cost to applying for the endorsement when you're refreshing?
No.
This is no course now for paramedics.
To pay your, um, pay your dues by all the other stuff you're already doing. But you know our system, Matt, it's free.
So I just make sure we have, just to make sure we have time to get to a couple more action items. Uh, on this one, essentially, this is outlining on page thirty-three into the top of page thirty-four for those individuals who are not doing the refresher course, this is another pathway. And again, mirrors the hours of sixty hours of continuing education was at least eight covering critical care, which would then match the sixteen hours over a four-year cycle for the national standard.
Perfect. Thank you, Gale. Okay, moving on to the next part.
It looks like Brian has his hand up.
Okay, Brian.
Uh, so quick questions, just so I understand. So I'm not nationally registered, so right now, today, I need forty-eight hours of a refresher or um continuing education. But now it's going to be sixty hours. If I, if I go to ALS refresher, now it's going to, I'm going to have to pay for sixty hours and eight hours of that should be critical care, even though I'm not a critical care paramedic?
No.
Only if you're.
Well, okay, I'll come back and read it. We're going to have a chance to make more comment on this uh in the rules package, right?
So Brian, look at uh, on thirty-three, there's three DII and then three IIII. That's where it specifies paramedics versus critical care endorsement in addition. So there's no change to the normal paramedic certification hours. If you look right above uh the.
Oh, I.
At the page there.
All right, okay, without endorsement, a minimum of forty-eight hours. Okay, I get it. Just sort through this thing.
I know. Thank you, Brian. Uh, okay, moving on to the next uh item here is going to be documentation of administrative medical direction for ALS staff. And this is thirty-four, so flip one more page. And in section D here, you will see um that it says, in addition to the application, an applicant who provides ALS services or performs an STR skill, she will submit an app, uh, that they, and it's basically an attestation that the applicant has an administrative medical director in their name, and that the medical director has assessed the applicant's skills according to the statute requiring medical director to provide um, education related to STRs. Brian?
Um, I was going to make comment on this uh during the survey, but I had a base hospital audit coming up and a big pediatric symposium working. This is not just for critical care. This is for every paramedic who is or any AMT paramedic or EMT with STR skills has to now have, and now has to attest that the medical director has watched everything they do. Is that what that's saying? Every, every ALS skill that I as a paramedic have that I do, now I have to attest that the administrative medical director has asked, has assessed that skill every single time? Because I've got a hundred and eighty paramedics in sixteen agencies and spread out over a hundred or over fifteen thousand square miles. How, how, how are they going to go out and assess every applicant? And then that applicant has to attest that they have done that, because I think that's what essentially what this is saying.
This is Ruth Ann's.
Yes.
This, this is Ruth Ann's Michael. Um, the, the current requirement is R nine twenty-five five oh two is for an administrative medical director to have assessed uh the uh ability of EMCT that they are providing uh administrative medical direction for, uh, for any uh skill and any ALS skill or any STR.
Yeah, but.
This is just saying that, uh, that the EMCT is attesting that uh, that they have been monitored by their administrative medical director.
Well, how do, okay, so, s- s- so, you know, national registry uh allows a medical director to sign off that they have assessed those skills through QA, QI. That's not exactly the way this is saying that, because we monitor, we do the same thing. Our, we monitor what is going on in our system with our providers through qua- through QA, through chart auditing, through uh whatever forms they submit to us for doing different kinds of things. We don't go out and look at every single little thing they're doing, and they don't, they don't know what we do or do not necessarily do at any given time unless there becomes an issue with that person. So I don't see how, how I can, I can say that. The other thing that, that I think is a problem here is that there are, this is going to put a bunch of paramedics who are in administrative positions who are not necessarily taking care of patients, now not able to recertify, and we're going to lose paramedics um in the system. Prior to two thousand and five, I used to have to have a medical director sign off all my CE. Um, and, and uh, uh, and when I recertified, they signed off my certification that I submitted to the state. If I was in between jobs or I, or, or I was in an, in an administrative position, I might not have a medical director. That's why we got rid of all of that stuff in two thousand and five.
Right.
So now, we're now, we're now obliterating people's ability to go into other sections of EMS, because I can't attest to that.
Thank you, Brian. That's a very good point. Josh?
Sorry, it took me a minute, minute to get off mute. Um, I, I agree with Brian, uh, but for purely administrative reasons, um, I, I would support eliminating this selection, this section, mostly because it's a, it's mostly bureaucratic redundancy. Um, as a medical director, I'm already required to ensure that my providers, both EMTs and paramedics and AEMTs, um, have completed both a training module in their STRs and maintain their competencies. Um, so this just, I, I'm already required to do that. To me, this is another kind of paperwork step that um makes it uh more burdens- burdensome on both medical directors and providers to, to maintain their certifications. I don't really see the need for it, mostly because it's already covered in another section. So that's my two cents.
Thank you, Josh. I think, go ahead.
This is Ruth Ann's Michael. Uh, which refers to the individual who is uh performing administrative duties. Uh, this would not apply to them as long as they said that they're doing administrative duties, uh, because it says an applicant who provides ALS services or performs an STR during the regular course of employment. It's because you're allowed to, doesn't mean that you actually do.
Sure. So I have another comment, I think, for this one. Uh, I also would uh support removing this uh addition for the same reasons this has been previously mentioned. I also think it creates an incredible amount of confusion. So I, I do have some providers that work for multiple different agencies. Um, they may have the ability to perform certain STRs at one agency because they've received training by a medical director. And then maybe the other agency, they have a, a different set of STRs that they may follow under that administrative medical director. And so you may be operating under different medical directors who have different levels of comfort or, or you have different abilities to do some of these STRs for different purposes. And I, I think it would also create an incredible amount of confusion with, with who is exactly providing that education and, and who's responsible for that. Um, so I, I think that it creates more problems and eliminates problems. Um, so I, I would support striking this as well.
Uh, Josh, and do you have a hand up against?
My apologies, I just forgot to lower it.
Mm hmm. I figured.
This, this Ruth Ann's Michael, and as a point of clarification, are you recommending that we strike all of D or just D two?
I would say all of D.
Do you not believe that there's a, a value in knowing who the administrative medical director for uh, an EMCT is?
Some of them have three medical directors or four medical directors. I don't know that you could, what information or what help that would be um, to know who the medical director was, because, I, I mean, it's sort of irrelevant to this point, to the point of recertification.
And then the uh Jason Johnson?
Yeah, I was just going to agree with Amber and Josh. It's, it seems kind of redundant. It's stuff that I already do on the side. So, you know, asking to do more for something we're already doing, it's just a bunch of extra paperwork. And I agree with what Amber said. Some of her people work here, or they may be working down the valley part-time. You have people who are all over the board, and then having the state try to regulate who's their medical director over this specific STR is just going to be a nightmare.
I agree. Roy?
I concur with uh the removal of D under this requirement. I am the longest certified paramedic in the state of Arizona, uh, and I would not be eligible for recertification as a paramedic, even though I met all of the continuing education requirements.
Brian?
Yeah, I, I think, uh, I guess, I guess, based off of what Ruth Ann said about the way this is describing that you're actually doing those services, would relieve Roy and myself of that. But it's still, we got rid of that medical director being tied to a person's certification for a reason, rather than the medical director is authorizing people to do stuff within an agency, and it has nothing to do with their certification. It presents too many different. Uh, it, it was a big deal on how many different agencies I worked for prior to two thousand and five and which one I said was my medical director at any given time. It just gets uh, turns into a mess and lets people met, potentially medical director shop if they've got multiple agencies that they're working for.
Thank you, Brian. Josh?
The risk of prolonging the discussion even further, um, just to add a, a medical reason that we should completely eliminate this, I think we need to look at a, a good example. Um, EMTs, of course, and STR is a place superglottic airways. Um, I train my EMTs in that STR using IGEL. Um, there are multiple different superglottic airways available. And just because uh, uh, EMP has been checked off by me to do an SDR um, and superglottic airway placement, does not mean that they should use that skill outside of my agency. Um, they certainly, under my training, don't have the ability to insert other superglottic airways. So I think medically, we could make a fairly strong argument that uh this medical director signing off on an STR that allows a EMCT to practice that skill uh anywhere uh could be medically unsafe.
Agreed. Any other comments on this one before we move on?
Excellent feedback.
Uh, we have a couple more items. If we have the time, we'll try to move through these last couple before the end of the hour. Let's get to number eight, comprehensive practical skills, hands-on exam, uh, still required. We're going to go back to page twenty-one.
And if I can just give a, a little background on this, this is to address the national registry is sunsetting their uh psychomotor exam as of June thirtieth to July first, that would be part of kind of the uh written exam. So the uh skill exam is no longer going to be required by national registry. Uh, so this is uh just maintaining that requirements to the state.
And we've heard um nearly all states are maintaining.
Any specific comments on that part? Okay, with no comments, maybe I'll move on to the next one, and if someone has a go back, we can go back to that one. Uh, the next one is going to be page seventeen, new EMR training program requirements must align with new state statutes. Uh, seventeen and twenty-three. So in this section, uh, it starts uh sort of on the page before. Um, discusses the content outline, final exams. And then they're consistent with the national education standards or um, the national education standards for EMR or its topics identified in the statute.
It's page twenty-three.
Right, which is on page.
As often as the page here. And we've already gone over twenty-three.
Yeah.
Is this for the EMR? Correct?
Correct.
This for clinical, uh, item number three, for clinical training, page twenty-three. Clinical training or field training with the student's preceptor according to.
No. B.
Is that right? Yeah, B, number. It says a preceptor. I'll go up a little bit, please. Uh, item number A three, for the purposes of section. This is for clinical.
The definition of a clinical, of a contact hour. That just defines what a contact hour is for clinical training. But what we're discussing in number nine is uh A three. But what we're discussing in number nine is A three B. And section B, so training program certificate shall ensure that the course to prepare an individual to provide EMR services covers the knowledge, skills and competencies for EMR program defined in thirty-six twenty-two oh one and has a minimum length of seventy-five hours and seventy hours of contact time. That's the part we're discussing in item number nine.
And I think to take in the feedback, we got from previous discussion, the section was about including the high fidelity simulation.
Correct. Yeah, I think that would apply to this section also.
Do we have to define high fidelity?
We would have to.
Question on that one. So if I'm just driving now, what's, what's going to be like my five patient interaction? Is it just an affective domain that you're looking for? Since we're not really doing much of any patient skills, what's that pertaining to five patient?
TJ? So I think, sorry, just to answer the question in the room first, the, as an EMR, you would be one of two individuals working the ambulance. So if that patient deteriorated, you would be the second set of hands care for patients.
CPR?
Yeah.
So in the, in the definitions, they, they have a definition for a patient in here. So the definition for a patient is it's in there, but it basically means an individual who's sick, injured or wounded requires medical monitoring, medical treatment or transport. So it's five of those.
And then TJ, I see your hand followed by Brian?
Yeah, I was just going to reiterate what, what you had said. I was going to mention that first, that in some areas, the, the ambulance crew, that could be an EMR and an EMT, that's going to be the only responding team. So there's not going to be additional folks coming to that. There's areas in, around Ajo and down in southern Arizona, especially where that was one of the options they were going to go for. And again, the same high fidelity simulation, that's, that's outlined in the national standards and that language, if it's added to all of them, it had been there in the past where it was clinical, vehicular or high fidelity simulation. So they had the option to do all of them.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you, TJ. Vince?
This question is more for Ruth Ann. Hey Ruth Ann, would this be the section possibly where you could put something about the EMR that goes through the administrative medical director route, the training requirements for driving?
This has nothing whatsoever to do with the administrative medical director route.
I know, but I'm talking about specifically the driving portion because it's supplemental requirements, right? So if you can't put it in the administrative medical director's side, I'm trying to find a place where you could put that because I really strongly feel that, number one, the, that, that route of an EMR is so minimal and the driving portion is so important. We've all talked about it. Where, where is their number one role as an EMR to drive the ambulance? And somewheres, somewheres, it has to be addressed and placed. And I'm just looking for a place to put it.
That would presumably be in, in article nine, having to do with requirements for a certificate holder to ensure that an EMR has these driving skills required before allowing them to, to drive. That would not be in a training requirement or for an administrative medical director to assess.
Yeah, I get it. And unfortunately, article nine has closed, so.
All right. So moving on to
Amber, we have Brian and then Roy.
Brian, sorry. Thanks, Gil.
I have, there's a lot of comments about how these people are only going to be driving, but you know, there may be fire first response agencies out there that would want EMRs and that's where this training program would be appropriate potentially for them to have EMRs that are first responders and to and, and, and once again, if they're teamed up with an EMT, as TJ described, they're going to be, they may very likely be doing on seeing a fair amount of, of of clinical care. So I don't know that these people are just drivers.
Roy?
I think there's a, a little bit of a, well, I have no problem with Vince's concern. That concern extends literally across every certification level of field personnel. Once you get your EMT, you can go to work as an ambulance company and drive day one with zero training and emergency vehicle driving. It's not included during your EMT course. We are certifying, or at least we're certifying training programs for EMRs that includes some driving experience, but as was mentioned earlier, every organization has insurance. It requires varying levels of instruction and qualifications to actually drive the vehicle. So we, we would be including a requirement for driving instruction for the EMR. It's not included today for EMTs because they can drive day one with no driving instruction.
That's been on the chat. And the last thing. I don't think we'll be able to get to number ten. We've got three minutes left, but we do have a table for the March twenty-first. Education meeting to come back to any. We don't have the time. It's too very, very sad. Okay, so Ruth Ann is asking if we can quickly look at number ten on the list of page thirty-one.
On page ten, which is industrial certification requirements for the military.
This is Ruth Ann, which is the
Oh, sorry, thirty-one. Thirty-one, sorry, wrong page.
Which is, this is Ruth Ann, this is the G victory.
Yes.
So documentation of completion of training and testing by branch of the armed forces is comfortable.
It's in the middle of the page on page thirty-one. Yeah, right there.
Amber Dan, this is directly responsive to new statutory language. It very specifically says that we have to follow a national requirement. Is that right? That's, I, there we have to have requirements in there that are tailored to an individual who has gained knowledge, skills and experience through service in the armed force.
Any specific comments on this addition here related to armed forces testing?
While people are thinking that, I will just flick at the, the two questions in the chat. Did I understand the statement correctly regarding the definition of a classroom situation can include in-person and virtual instruction by the lead instructor? And the answer is yes. And then I'm not sure of understanding the second question for an EMT training program that currently uses the National Registry skill sheets for testing student skills, can these skill sheet be edited? I'm looking at Dewey to see if he can.
Are, is she talking about National Registry tests that they would administer when the changeover occurs?
It's all, I'm trying to figure out what the question is, just to make sure we're answering that correctly.
Yeah, thank you. The, so the, I guess the second question was the, my thought was, is the future looking where we can almost hold a virtual EMT program excluding the skills should be done in person? The, the other part was those skill sheets that we currently use that are national registry skill sheets. Can those skill sheets be customized to fit our organization that still, even if we still fit the, the medical trauma assessments and so forth, but can they be physically, if you will, tweaked or edited or up, or upgraded to a peanut community college version of a skill sheet? Or is that something that has to be approved by some other authority?
This is Dewey Anderson. It's my understanding, correct me if I'm, Noreen and Dr. Bradley, if I'm incorrect on this. In a meeting with the National Registry yesterday, it's our understanding they're going to send skill sheets out to the training programs. And you'll be using their skill sheets. Is that the way you guys understand it?
Well, I mean, if you look at the rules, the way they're written, it says national standards for National Registry. And Dr. Bradley and I were just discussing that. It's like, is there national standards for skill?
And I think, sorry, I thought it was a quick question. We are over time for the meeting, so we just wanted to make sure those go beyond kind of the scope of what we can address in the rule writing today. Certainly if there's feedback that needs to come through the committee, we will have some time. And we get to it at the next education meeting, which is March twenty-first. So we have on the agenda ready for the discussion if people would like, but we are over time, so I want to keep track of everyone. Time for that.
Yep. Thank you all. So obviously the next meeting for education committee is next Thursday. DHS and virtual meetings. And with that, I guess we will adjourn the meeting for today.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.